It is February the 6th at 6:30 and we're going to begin. Jamie, may we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Harof?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Hilmer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chu?
Here.
And Mayor Morrison?
Here. If you're able to, please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment. Do we have anybody in the public realm that would like to make a comment that's not on the agenda tonight? All right. Larry Meredith, Dr. Meredith, come on up. How are you, sir?
I am well, thank you. Madam President, Town Council members, my name's Larry Meredith. I live 300 Madrone Avenue and I am here to bring you information about a county survey that I think will offer an opportunity for us who live in Larkspur to take advantage of the information gathering. The county has recently been recognized for age-friendly status. One of the ingredients that's a requirement for that is to conduct a survey of the residents. So there's a county survey going on. I believe you all have a copy of it. And it was very professionally done. It's going out to as many residents in the county as is possible. And this is all a provision of the World Health Organization and the AARP that are the designators of age-friendly communities and cities throughout, well, in fact, throughout the world. So it's unusual for a county to seek and obtain age-friendly status. The survey, as I say, is going out to as many residents as is possible. The opportunity for Larkspur is if we can increase the number of Larkspur residents, and you also have the data that is the most recent data on the fact that 34 percent, 30, I'm sorry, 31 percent of Larkspur's residents, based on data from 2009 to 2013, so it's aged, it's conservative because the demographic trends of aging have been steadily increasing over the last five years, so it's unclear what the number is now. But let's say a third of Larkspur is over the age of 60. And since we're all aging, creating a community that supports healthy, safe, engaged aging is, I think, what we all believe in and want to do. This survey would help us gather the information that will enable us to better understand how residents over 60 perceive what is working well, what's not working well in Larkspur. I would propose, and I, that the survey, which is online also, you have a hard copy, the online copy, could be sent to everyone on the Larkspur mailing list. I know that most communities keep an email list that notify people of important events going on. This would be to encourage people to complete the survey. It's not mandatory. It's, but the more people from Larkspur, who are Larkspur residents who complete it, the more robust the data will be and the better our analysis and understanding of the perceptions of this group. So that's my ask. I, at another time, will return to help move you all forward on seeking age-friendly status for the town of Larkspur. Of the 11 towns, the 11 towns that are incorporated in Marin, plus the county, we are the odd city out on the pursuit of age-friendly status. And I would like to help us get where it might be, where we're taking advantage of others who have maybe gone before us. And so I don't think we're far behind, but clearly this survey will be helpful.
Great, thank you.
Be happy to respond to any questions.
Well, I'm just going to share, just thank you for being so involved with the age population, especially with the Twin City Village. But I'll reach out to you and maybe we can have a meeting with Dan Schwartz, our city manager, to talk further about it, okay, Larry?
Okay.
Great, thank you, Dr. Meredith.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I see none, okay. Oh, Cindy, come on up.
Cindy Winter, I was talking by email with Catherine about fire safety and what San Rafael is doing and what Mill Valley is doing. And I'm not sure what Larkspur's doing about vegetation and taking out flammable materials that are growing here and there and everywhere. And so I don't have any suggestions right now, but I would appreciate very much if the city could sort of watch what San Rafael's doing in Mill Valley and talk with the Scott shirts and move forward on that.
Great, thanks, Cindy. Anyone else? Okay, I see none. I'll bring it back to three. We have a presentation update on the Sonoma Marin aerial rail transit, SMART, Larkspur Extension. We have Bill Gamlin, welcome, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Before I jump into Larkspur, I thought I might just give you a brief update on what SMART has been doing and an update on the system. We've been in service now about a year and a half. We just reached our 1 million ridership mark. That was on January 17th. We were thrilled to celebrate that achievement. And we are coming up closely on a million bicycles soon as well, 100,000 bicycles, excuse me, as well also. We have found that we have tremendous bicycle ridership on our trains. We're moving about 2,200 to 2,500 trips per day during the week, and about, almost 10 percent of that includes bicycles. So we're finding that our ridership's using the bicycle for their first and last mile of their trip. We are bringing four new train sets online, so it'll be two, two, two car train sets, four cars total. That'll provide expansion for us to get to Larkspur as well as Windsor. And in terms of Windsor, we're just beginning design work on an extension up there, which include one station in Windsor as well. And finally, we are embarking on a passenger rail study between Nevada and Sassoon. This is something that the state rail plan included us in and asked us to take a look at. So it's a very high-level feasibility study to look at what might be possible to provide an alternative to some of the congestion on Highway 37. Moving into Larkspur, just if you may recall, it's a 2.1 mile extension from downtown San Rafael to Larkspur Landing, where we have one station at the end there, providing connectivity to the bike path system and the ferry as well. Construction update, we've generally been building the project from the south to the north, so things are a little bit more completed on the south end. We've got quite a bit of track built at this point. The station platform itself is built. We've been doing a lot of roadway reconstruction where we trade places between the rail and the roadway in San Rafael, between Second and Rice Streets, and that's wrapping up now. We're working on putting tracks through the Bettini Transit Center, which will make connections to the system at Third Street. So we're coming up on a couple of big closures of two major arterials in San Rafael, Second and Third Street. We'll have weekend shutdowns there to do that track work. And once we have the system connected, we'll start to get into a point of testing trains. So that's coming during the summer. That'll probably start around the July timeframe, ramp through the fall, and we're looking at service actually moving passengers by the end of the calendar year. Julian was kind enough to put a slide up to provide a little perspective at the station area, which is really probably the greatest interest to Larkspur. At the top of the slide is US 101 to orient you. The theater is in this area. The pathway is in purple up there. That includes the, leads to the overcrossing over Sir Francis Drake. The station itself is in yellow, orangish color up here with a promenade leading up to the platform. We'll have a small drop-off area, parking, and then a turnaround at the end, and we'll have accessible parking up here closer to the station itself. All told, about 37 parking spots with about four accessible parking spots. Access will be through Golden Gate's property. That was really our only option there, so we've squeezed just about everything we can out of the site. We will have bicycle lockers and bicycle parking in this area as well. That's kind of the big picture. Any questions on the project?
37 parking spots, is that going to be the maximum? And is there opportunity within the Golden Gate Bridge parking area to work out an arrangement with them?
Well, Golden Gate and SMART will utilize the same parking system, ParkMobile. I suspect if you parked here and you rode the train, or if you parked there and rode the ferry, ParkMobile's probably not going to know, but we do not have a relationship with Golden Gate that's going to share parking spaces.
The turnaround drop-off spot area, is that accessible for buses?
Small buses, yes.
So like the whistle stops type of size bus?
Yes, exactly, shuttle-type buses.
Uh-huh. And then what about, 100,000 bikes is a lot. I've ridden the train and it's pretty crowded with bikes. Where do you imagine protected bike parking down here?
We will have bike lockers with, also with open-air bike racks in this area, so adjacent to the pathway.
And how many of those would be there in protected bike parking in that area?
I think we've got 10 to 16 bike lockers. What we've found in a year and a half of service is most of our cyclists take their bikes with them.
With them?
We're not seeing a tremendous use of bike lockers, but it's nice to have the option.
Is there options for adding additional cars that only hold bikes? Because, I mean, we're talking about the Larkspur station, but just in my own experience, it's jammed with bikes. And I'm just wondering if there are other options for rail cars that are designed primarily to hold bikes?
I think it's something we can look into. Immediately in the near term, we've been trying to run some three-car trains during the peaks, in the morning, in the evening, that just provides a little more space for everybody, including bicycles. And that those four cars, those option cars I mentioned, will help with that, just that small expansion of the fleet.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. Can you just give us a little more detail on what your expectations are in terms of utilization of SMART for Larkspur as an endpoint in terms of their transportation options? People are going to use the ferry, for example?
Yeah, I think the ferry connection is going to be huge, the bicycle path.
But really, I'm actually asking for more details in terms of your analytical projections for that?
I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for, but in terms of...
Numbers.
Numbers? I don't really have any numbers for you. I mean, we're going to align our trains so that they connect with the ferry's schedule. There'll probably be some tweaking of the SMART schedule, perhaps the ferry schedule, so people can make those connections, provide some time there for the walking or the biking between the two.
Right, but you don't, doesn't sound like you have any specific projections about how many people do use it.
Like ridership?
Yeah.
I do not offhand, no.
So, no idea?
I do not, no. It's possible we have that information in the organization.
Don't you think that would be important to have?
It could be. I'm on the engineering side of the house, so my focus is a little bit more project implementation. I wasn't ready for that question, my apologies.
Yeah, that's fine. It's a question I think many in our community have.
Sure.
The other question I have is, can you just tell us again how the horns will be used when the train comes and goes in Larkspur?
At this station, because there's no roadway crossings nearby, they'll just be a simple toot of the horn as it leaves the station to make passengers aware, people on the platform, that the train is leaving.
And has there been any analysis about how loud that will be and what the projection in terms of the community might be? In terms of noise?
Yeah, the horn is regulated as to how loud it has to be, the decibel range. And I believe the noise impacts would have been evaluated in the environmental impact report.
Okay, and nothing more to add than just what we find in the reports?
Mm-hmm.
Because I can hear it, you know, where I live in Greenbree, all the way from San Rafael.
Yeah, it's probably like hearing the ferry as well.
I'm not sure about that, but, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? So, Bill, I have a question. So, how can Larkspur prepare ourselves if we have an inflex amount of people? Let's say it's quite popular and we have thousands, bikes, people, confusion, parking, how are we going to handle this? I feel it's going to be a huge success. We welcome you, we're excited about it, we want to work well with you, but prepare us for what other cities that are in situations now, how are they dealing with the popular SMART train coming into their city?
Sure, very, very broad question, but excellent question. I think one of the great pieces here in this location is so much bicycle network has already been constructed and it's been well-integrated. So there's a nice pathway system for folks to get to the ferry, to make connectivity to Bon Air, to Larkspur Landing, and other cases. Traffic is always going to be a challenge. I think it's a challenge up and down the line. A lot of these older cities don't have large infrastructure for lots of vehicles, which is not a bad thing, but it's just pushing all of us, I think, to other modes of transportation. Each of our cities is different. The parking lots are different sizes. Some of them are located in more remote areas, some like downtown San Rafael are very urban settings with very little parking. So I think we found our passengers have adapted as much as possible to whatever their destination is, the regular ridership. I know that's a very broad answer, that's not direct to your question, but the ferry's going to be a big destination for a lot of the ridership, or an origination for a lot of the ridership, so that connectivity exists. The vehicle's going to be the challenging one, you know? The drop-off opportunity exists, but parking is limited.
Right. So, could you help us when, when people do arrive and we want them to use the overpass and not go and use the street passing, because then that's going to stop traffic and it's going to cause more havoc? Can you announce on the intercom, please use the pedestrian, bridgeway?
Yeah, that's something we could look into.
That would be really helpful to us, so then we can keep the traffic flowing on the streets and make sure the passengers uses what we've built.
Each of our train cars has a conductor on it and they interact quite a bit with our patronage, so something like that's possible.
That would be very helpful to us.
To direct them in that route, yeah.
Great, all right, thank you.
Great questions.
Anyone else?
Just a comment. Thanks, Bill, for coming and giving a great presentation this evening.
My pleasure.
I just want to point out that Dan Schwartz and I have a meeting scheduled with Dennis Mulligan, general manager of the Golden Gate Bridge Highway Transportation District, to discuss their interest in ferryboat expansion. So there's an opener for us to talk about the overall parking issue in the area and how we all might work together and maybe have the city take a lead role in the conversation on how we might better plan for the impacts that are going to accumulate there. As we get closer to having a direct freeway connection between 101 and 580, taking a lot of that traffic off of Sir Francis Drake should help, again, with cumulative impact reduction. So it's a big topic, is my point, and we're going to bring all the stakeholders together to address it.
Thank you. Dan, Hilmer, just in case everyone out there sits on this SMART train, he represents us, and that would be wonderful. In effect, if he can come and do a presentation about all that you discussed, that would be great.
I'd be happy to brief the council on outcomes at the meeting.
Great, thank you. All right, anything else, Bill?
That covers it for me, thank you very much.
Nice job, thank you, nice to see you. I should ask Bill before, anybody from the public, how many questions regarding the SMART train arrival? All right, I see none, great. I'll move on to the approval of the consent calendar. Anybody from the council want to remove anything? Yes, Dan Schwartz?
Madam Mayor, I wanted to note, there's a typo on one of the staff reports. It doesn't affect the actions you'll take in adopting the consent calendar, but for the benefit of the public, it relates to the list of streets in Agenda Item 4.4 for our pavement program, and I know a lot of folks are interested in that. So for those who have access to the item now, and we will publish a revised version of the item on the website, at the bottom of page two, there's a parenthetical that, it says via La Paz, and then in parentheses, it says from south end to Via Branca and Corte Ramon to the north end. It actually should say via La Paz, and then in parentheses say from Via Branca to Corte Ramon.
Okay, so you don't need to pull it, you're just going to...
I just wanted to clarify that, so, because I imagine there are folks interested in looking at this list.
Thank you. Any council members want anything pulled from the consent calendar? All right, I'll go out to the public, anybody from the public like anything pulled from the consent calendar? I see none, I'll bring it back to the council. May I have a motion to approve consent calendar?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? I see none, great, thank you. Now we'll move on to the city manager oral report. Dan Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have two items for you. The first is that this Friday is the deadline for folks who are interested in applying for the vacancy that's currently on the library board. So any residents or, any residents who are interested should contact the city clerk or look on our website for more information. And secondly, I wanted to let the public know, and there's information about this on the homepage of the city's website, but there's a free workshop for residents interested in creating junior accessory dwelling units. It's scheduled for tomorrow. It's a workshop where folks can learn about creating these types of units and how they might modify their own structures to have these sorts of units, what it would mean to rent these types of units. The workshop's between 9:00 and 11:00 a.m. It's at the Whistle Stop Facility, which is 930 Tamalpais Avenue in San Rafael, and we encourage folks who are interested in the topic to go. There is going to be a second workshop for folks who can't go tomorrow or haven't been aware of this. There'll be one on March 30, Saturday, March 30, and that'll be at Nevada City Hall. Details to follow. With that, I turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you, Dan. Any questions for Dan? I see none. Councilmembers' oral report and comments, does anybody have anything to say, share? Kevin, why don't we go with Councilman Harof?
I don't want to get in the way. Thank you. I just wanted to give a quick update in my capacity as the city's representative on MCE. We've been spending a fair amount of time at MCE trying to address the potential consequences of the PG&E bankruptcy proceedings, which were initiated last week. There's not a lot of details that I'm really in a position to share at this point, but I did want to read our official public statement, which is that PG&E is a valued partner of MCE, and the entity, MCE, is monitoring the developments with the PG&E bankruptcy. We've been assured by PG&E that they are not going out of business and that they do not expect any impact to natural gas or electric service to customers as a result of the Chapter 11 process. Anyone who has questions, certainly contact PG&E or get in touch with me, and I can put you in touch with our public relations folks at MCE. So bottom line is, things will go on as normal, but it's a challenge and we have work to do. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Hilmer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make a reference point relative to SMART. SMART has been in operation close to a year, and as Bill described, it's popular and achieving levels of success. I just want to emphasize the complexities around creating a safe public transportation system. Last year, we had four lives lost, and it, a lot of complex issues such as mental health and behaviors you might not expect to learn about, including terrorism considerations. I mean, there's just a wide range of considerations. SMART has its own police force, as you might know. Last night, at today's board meeting, we had a report on something, an incident that took place last night that took everyone by surprise, and that is somebody playing chicken with the train. Something called planking, where they lie down in between the tracks and hope that the train can pass over them. The engineers have to respond through an emergency stop when that sort of incident takes place, putting everybody on the train in danger. And the train has to stop within a short distance, and injuries on the train become very possible. So I just want to point out that all the things surrounding safety along the train line have to take top priority as we move forward with this. And, you know, we want to make everybody happy and make the whole thing a very positive experience, but for the people that make the train system work, the factors of safety and tolerance are so small, we have to have a 99.999 percent ability to control the train at all times. And if there's a two-second delay in the schedule, given the automation of the system, the positive train control system comes into play, and it's just a federally controlled, regulated system. So safety's top priority. We're going to do our best to make it joyful and not bring these issues up too often, but it underlies, it's the foundation of it all. So I just want to point out as we, as service arrives, it's, the conversation's going to get serious and these issues are going to become real, and it's going to add a whole layer of complexity to our local government. So just, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Dan, for bringing that to our attention. Sure, okay.
No, go ahead.
Councilman, okay, Councilwoman Way?
Sure. So this might answer Ms. Winter's, some of her questions. The Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Committee met on Monday, and our fire marshal, Reuben Martin, came and talked about what's going on with the enhancing fire prevention within the Twin Cities. It's really terrific to see how the Fire Chiefs Association is beginning to roll out a whole lot of coordinating programs and enforcement measures within all of our cities and towns, and they're working really closely with each other on that. Some cities have rolled out things a little sooner than others, but they're all in the pipeline of doing it. I've actually been asked by Katie Rice, who's our supervisor, to sit on a new committee in which we're going to take those lessons learned document from last year of the lessons learned in the Sonoma and Napa fires, and what we can do to implement those things here. So there's, to let you know, there's, I think, very important work being done on that. One of the things that Reuben Martin discussed was how we're working on creating and enforcing stricter ordinances for hardening structures and homes and vegetation management. Those are things coming out. They've also, through our Central Marin Fire, have applied for a million dollar, I don't know if it's a million or maybe 100,000, I don't know if there was a typo in this, grant to fund a vegetation clearing in our open land, wildland spaces. There's been money distributed in the new governor's budget that will help with vegetation management. They're also developing plans through all of our cities that will be rolled out to create not only stricter and more definable evacuation routes, but also what are called TRAs, Temporary Refuge Areas, that can be identified within communities. So there's also an enhanced and very important efforts now to be stricter with enforcement on keeping defensible space around homes. So I think that you'll see in the upcoming six months, a tremendous amount coming out that we're going to look at as far as adopting different codes and ordinances that will be supported by our fire departments. In that note, there is a very good workshop coming up called Fire Safe Marin. That is 2019 Fire Safe Marin Workshop that's open to the public on March 8, Friday, March 8. I attended last year. It's a fascinating countywide opportunity to learn about how to make your homes and your neighborhoods more fire-wise. We have some communities, neighborhoods within Larkspur, Corte Madera, the Central Marin jurisdiction that are working for certification of this, fire-wise, but I highly recommend that workshop. And the last thing that was discussed is that we are currently at 41 neighborhood response groups within the Twin Cities, and growing... groups within the Twin Cities and growing, is it 41 or 44? Yeah, 44, excuse me, neighborhood response groups within the Twin Cities. And I would encourage everyone to go on to the web, NRG News letter that comes out once a month or once every other month. It's at nrgmarin.org, full of very good prevention information and a lot of things specific to the Twin Cities. And a lot of classes, a lot of things about chipper days, about taking cert classes, they're all here, and this is primarily focused on Corte Madera and Larkspur and Greenbry. The other part that was exciting about the NRG program is they're expanding rapidly into Greenbry, and they've had several meetings, our neighborhood response group coordinator, Lori, to create upwards of 12 Greenbry NRGs at this point. So it's moving forward well that way.
She's doing a great job.
Yeah, she is. She's been a good fit, and that was pretty much the only committee I have been able to attend lately for various reasons.
Thank you, Catherine.
And I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, I just wanted to comment how excited I am about the fact that we are now looking forward to the next phase of our paving project getting started this spring. That's going to have, I think, an initial impact in particular to our community in Greenbry. And as a result, we're seeing a lot of folks, including myself, teeing up the replacement of their sanitary sewer laterals. We've got trucks all over the neighborhood right now, and I expect to see more and more of that over the next couple of weeks. So folks want to get engaged in coordinating with that. There are lots of folks who are already doing that and look forward to working with people. Would be curious for our Public Works Director if we could get more of a schedule, if there's a possibility of that, in terms of what the plans are in terms of paving, particularly in those neighborhoods. But you don't have to do that now. That can be shared at a later point.
How exciting for your neighborhood, Kevin. That's great. I know the havoc and all that, but...
Well, we have a lot of trucks.
I know, boss. It's all worth it in the end, that's for sure. I sit on the legislative committee, and we met with our Senator Mike McGuire, and we talked about SB 50 and SB 4. SB 50 is what our Governor Newsom is promoting. He feels there's a housing social injustice. So SEQA is part of the SB 50, and it focuses on building around the trains, buses, and ferry area. Our senator is representing SB 4, which is in the process of being written now. So I just took some notes, and I put them into two different buckets. Again, it will hopefully be done by the end of this month. So he is, bucket one, would, he's really focusing on those cities at 50,000 or more population, allowing an extra story to each zoning allotment and making sure that those buildings that are built, they're 30% affordable housing. But the second bucket would pertain to Larkspur, those vacant lots, those single-family lots. You can build two to four units on those lots, and with his SB 4, there is no SEQA process. So that's interesting. So the SB 4 is an alternate to SB 50, which is wonderful. At our next MCC dinner we have at the end of the month, Senator Mike McGuire will be there, and hopefully by then he'll have the bill written. But I just wanted to just forewarn you, those are the two bills that are going to come into play, and that's it. Yes?
What's the legislative committee's recommendation?
No, on SB 50 for sure. SB 4, we're waiting to hear the finished product, but we're all very concerned with SB 4 about the no SEQA.
Yeah, Dan, that would also change our residential zoning in the R1, wouldn't it?
I have to apologize, Lori. I'm not familiar enough with the bill right now to ask that question.
Oh, yeah, but if they create up to quadplexes on a single parcel, that would be R2.
I think you're right, but I'm cautious to comment on legislation I haven't read. I'm sorry.
Yes, well, and it hasn't been written yet. I'm just forewarning you that that's what he's working on at this moment, and we'll learn more about it at the end of this month. Okay. We'll move on to public hearing. We'll move on to public hearing. 7.1, regulation of excavation in newly paved streets. We're going to waive first reading, and we're going to have, introduce ordinance 1033. So may we have staff update discussion?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, members of the public. Julian Skinner, Public Works Director for the City of Larkspur. So the request tonight is that you open a public hearing and that you waive the first reading of and introduce two ordinances, 1033 and 1034. These relate to the protection of newly paved streets. As Councilmember Harof mentioned before, we're about to embark on our first year of Measure B paving. And just as an aside, the best schedule we have for construction now is we're telling people somewhere between April 15 and August 15 is when the contractor's window will be for paving the streets, but the contractor is responsible for developing the individual street schedule. So the city doesn't tell the contractor which streets to pave when, but their window is April 15 to August 15. And so once we've selected a contractor, one of their first tasks will be to give us a schedule, and as soon as we have that, we'll put it up on the website for folks. So that'll be, that won't be until early April, though. But there are people out there that I know we get questions because they have to replace their sewer lateral, and we're telling them that to be sure, they should schedule that work for before April 15. So the two ordinances tonight, one is to amend a section of the municipal code, and the other is to add a section that further describes something that's mentioned in the first section. And so the 1033 ordinance is to make a minor amendment to Section 15.32.070, which is excavation of newly paved streets. And what this basically states is that once we pave a street, you cannot dig into that street for a period of five years. And the reason for that is that trench excavation, digging into streets, degrades the quality of the street, and no matter what kind of a patch you put back there, the street will not be the same, and we will more than likely have to come back and repave that street sooner because of the impact of the trench work. So we discourage folks from digging into the streets for five years. We do a number of things. We send out letters to people before we're going to pave their street to let them know of this five-year rule. We also meet with the utility districts and give them our plans as much as we can. We shared with them our five-year plan, so they have a view of what streets we're planning to do over the next five years, so that they can plan any works that they have, so that they can either plan to dig into those streets before we pave them or schedule it for after the five years has expired. And so the amendment to 15.32.070 is, one, just a minor one, to make that prohibition go into effect the day after the street is paved. The old ordinance was written that the prohibition of digging into the street didn't go into effect until after the city accepted the project. But sometimes when we're doing a lot of streets, we have these projects that can take a while, and we really don't want anybody digging into the street as soon as we're finished paving it. We don't want to have to give them the opportunity before we have a chance to accept the project. And the other change in 070 is that the old ordinance referred to an exhibit that the council would adopt by resolution that stated how the street would be reinstated if somebody were to dig into it within that five-year period. So if there's an emergency, like a utility failure, and somebody has no other option than digging up the street, then the Public Works Director can grant an exception to the five-year. They can dig up the street, repair the utility, or do whatever they needed to do to dig up the street. And then there is a series of additional pavement restorations that somebody would have to undertake versus a normal street that wasn't under the five-year moratorium. So that was referenced as an exhibit in the old 070. The new change is proposed to actually refer to the explicit repaving conditions, which are the subject of the proposed new section, which is 1532.075. And so that is the proposed added section that would spell out exactly what those pavement restorations are to be, if an exception to the five-year moratorium is granted. So that's the staff report. I'm available for questions or for the opening of the public hearing.
Great. Thank you, Julian. Any questions from the council? Larry?
Are you taking out both 070 and 075 in the same discussion?
I am. I defer to Sky as far as if there needs to be two resolutions.
It's fine to discuss them together. We'll need separate motions for each of the two ordinances.
Can you describe in more detail how the in lieu payments would work?
Yeah, so there is a provision that describes what the basic repaving requirement would be, but in some cases, it's to the city's advantage to, rather than have a contractor go out there and make a bigger patch on a street, which is essentially what the requirement for additional trenching, additional paving does, for us to take in an in lieu fee that would be the equivalent of that paving work, and then we live with a smaller patch, and then we take that in lieu fee and we put it towards our paving program, given that that street, instead of lasting 20 years, may last now only 18 years because it was dug into and it was compromised. So it's an attempt to build up the paving fund to account for the fact that we're going to have to pave some of our streets sooner rather than later because they were dug into. And the fee itself is calculated based on what it would cost the city to do the expanded pavement restoration that would have been required per the ordinance.
$500 sounds sort of low, though.
$500 is super low. So that is the minimal. We've actually, we've actually done a few of these already because the existing exhibit describes this process also, it's just not codified, and they're anywhere from $2,500 to $7,500, depending on the width of the lot frontage and the width of the street. So that's, that's what they have been working out to.
Yeah, if you factor in, if you're not going to pave it right away, though, you also need to factor in escalation for the time until you think it needs to be repaved again.
We haven't got that complex with it. We do add on a 20% factor, which is for the staff time, for adding that into a set of plans sooner rather than later, and for administration, but we haven't, we're not specifically projecting when that street would actually get paved, so we haven't added a specific escalation factor into it. But that fee would, in theory, go into a fund, and then it would be accruing interest over time if we didn't use it to pave the street for 10 years.
Yeah, but the interest is probably at life rates. Okay, you can figure it out. It just sounds too low.
Thanks, Larry. Dan, do you have any?
He answered my question.
Okay. Anyone else? No? All right, I'll move on to the public. Anybody from the public have any questions for staff? All right, I see none. We have a motion for, to waive first reading and introduce ordinance 1033? Don't be shy.
All right, I'll move to waive first reading of ordinance 1035.
1033.
1030.
1033.
I'll second that, but I do, I'm very mindful of the comments that Councilmember Two raised about the adequacy of the in lieu fees, and I think that's something that we need to think a little harder about, but I will second the motion.
I have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye. Anyone oppose? I see none. It passes. And now we'll move on to ordinance 1034.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? I see none. Thank you. We'll move on to 7.2, waive first reading and introduce ordinance 1035. May we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, I guess Jamie says I'm doing this one, too. So this is an update to municipal code section that deals with the award of public contracts. It references some outdated limits from the public contract code that have since been updated, and so rather than specifically update those limits in our code, we have redrafted the code to include the references to the public contract code. So as those limits change over time, we'll be able to award contracts in conformance with the public contract code and not have to update our municipal code every time they change. Basically, it's for public projects. There's two different limits. The first limit is $45,000. Anything up to that limit does not need to be publicly bid. And then there's another limit that's $175,000. This is the one that was explicitly in our code before, but at the old limit, which was $75,000. Anything up to that limit can be publicly bid by an informal process, and then once you get over $175,000, then a full public bid process is required for projects.
Thanks, Julian. Any questions from the council? Okay, Dan?
Is this kind of consistent with the best practices in projects bidding environment these days?
Yeah, this is most municipalities reference the public contract code, and then similar to what we did, they listed the actual amounts that were in the code and copied them into their municipal code, and then I think twice in a period of three years, those limits changed. And so when I was in Nevada, and a lot of other agencies also just changed their code to mirror what's in the public contract code, so they didn't have to catch up every time those limits were changed at the state level.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Anyone else? I see none. I open up to the public. Any questions for our staff? I see none. I'll bring it back to the council.
I'll move this, I'll move the staff recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Second?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? I see none. So ordinance 1035 has been passed. Move on to 7.3, waive first reading and introduce ordinance 1036. Now we have Jamie.
Thank you. So as you may recall, the city completed a thorough review of the Larkspur Municipal Code in 2018. To keep our code up to date, we're now bringing forward ordinance 1036, which contains just a few updates to Chapter 9.24 regarding code enforcement. And these updates are simply to conform with changes in state law regarding fines for code enforcement violations. There's no additional changes at this time.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions for staff? All right, I see none. I'll go to the public. Anybody in the public have any questions? Bring it back to the council. May I have a motion?
I'll move ordinance 1036, Madam Mayor.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? I see none. We've done well. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to 8.1, business item, preferential parking program. So we'll go ahead, and we'll have a staff report, but what I'd like to do for the discussion is we have four questions to direct the staff. Dan, I'd like to go through each one, so ask the question and give a staff update, please, and then we'll direct staff. Does that work for you?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Great. Thank you.
So this is actually the third time we've tried to bring you these sets of questions. As the council recall, back in October of 2018, you held a public workshop to hear from folks in the community about these questions, which were written to guide everyone in the discussion to establish the parameters for preferential parking programs in Larkspur. Unfortunately, we ran out of time. We had a time-restricted period for that public workshop, and the council wasn't really able to deliberate and provide its feedback to staff. So we tried to bring this back to you at the last meeting, and we actually opened the conversation, but then the weather and the storm we were experiencing took the power out, so that was...
Very dark.
Very early in this item, so we ceased discussing the item. However, during the course of the conversation, Councilmember Hilmer had started to ask some questions about how would this work in terms of the staff establishing and working with residents to establish the boundaries of areas that would be considered. So we actually were able to take the limited conversation we had before the power went out, and the city attorney and I brainstormed a little bit about it. So I did modify the staff report slightly from the one you had at your February meeting to suggest that we should amend the program to give the staff some leeway, specifically me or my designee, to say, you know, it's great that some folks might want a restricted parking situation on their block, but a block doesn't seem appropriate in this neighborhood. You need to go back out and petition your whole neighborhood, and then we'll have a real conversation, something to that effect. So that's what the intent of the language that you see that was added. It's an underline for folks who might be looking at the staff report. That wasn't present for your initiation of the conversation that was occurring in January. So with that said, as the mayor alluded to, we have four categories of questions that staff would like some feedback from you, and then what we'd like to do is use that feedback to craft our policies on how we will move forward with this. will move forward with this program. As the council knows and folks have been monitoring this issue, we have one neighborhood that's in the queue that's, that's waiting for you to sort of craft these answers so that we can come forward with a program for their neighborhood, and that's the Marina neighborhood across from Redwood High School. There are other neighborhoods that have contacted us and are watching, and I suspect will be asking some questions later. But as we've talked about, the Marina is very unique, two ingress egress points, both being affected significantly in some respects by the high school and the overflow parking of students into their neighborhood. And so we'd like to address that sooner rather than later. My only final comment before we go through the questions, Madam Mayor, I did want to acknowledge that from our observation, from public safety's observation, the changes that are occurring at Redwood have been very positive. Probably the most significant thing is a reduction in kids trying to race off at lunch and get back to the campus, which was a big health and safety concern that we had. We are still observing some overflow parking. And as the principal warned you when he was speaking to you, as the sophomore class gets their driver's licenses, which tends to start about now, they may start to drive to school. And those are the folks who won't have parking on the campus and may be looking into our neighborhoods and into Corder Madera. So some of the issues that we're trying to address here may materialize as we enter into the spring months. So the timing's good. Okay, so to follow the, the mayor's suggestion, the first question that we wanted to get some direction from the council is what should qualify a neighborhood to have this conversation, both with staff and then with the council? We looked at what other programs did. It seemed like 75% was a common threshold if you were going door to door and trying to get your neighbors to sign a petition. Another option, we've seen a lot of the language, is to have an HOA, a Homeowners Association, petition on behalf of its entire neighborhood. So we suggested those were good parameters. We added the qualification that staff should have the discretion to tell a petitioner, we don't think you define the area in a way that's logical for the enforcement of a program or the creation of a program for policy purposes. So here's what we would suggest the boundaries be, and we would like you to go out and petition within those boundaries. So that's the addition that we suggested, and we're seeking your feedback on that question.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dan.
Are we talking about creating a formed, a form type of petition so that each one is consistent, or do we expect the resident to create their own petition?
We could certainly provide some guidelines of, of what this looks like, so that it's not just guessing in the dark. There's a lot of examples that we saw in different cities. They really run the gamut. I have seen cities where it's just folks signing the bottom of a letter together and saying, you know, I live at such and such an address, and I agree, this should happen. And then I've seen some of the larger cities have full-blown
Yeah.
You know, forms that folks have to really fill out quite a bit of information.
I think you, to me, it would be helpful to have a city issued petition form that would describe sort of which ordinance we're discussing so that people would be better informed, rather than have the individual homeowner craft their own version of it, which may be incorrect as far as our own code or their own interpretation of the code. It just may be more consistent that way. And then, you know, the individual homeowners and addresses probably should also indicate how many vehicles they're intending to get a, a permit for. Sort of my thought. Rather than just, because we get a lot of petitions from people that are self-generated, and sometimes their, sometimes their, their content is inaccurate, so like, but I think that makes sense, number one, for me. We can add that part to it.
Anyone else? Larry?
You know, I, I would think we're going to need to give staff a lot of latitude on this. I would, I would say that there probably has to be consideration where there's a direct nexus in terms of the application that's being, you know, asked of, you know, the city. Because if I look at Baltimore Park, which is the neighborhood I live in, the natural boundary used to be Magnolia to the train tracks. But, you know, Dan, once before, this Dan thought that maybe NRGs, but, you know, our NRG then goes all the way to the back of Baltimore Canyon. So if, using the example, since we have a letter here from a Baltimore Park resident, if they're petitioning based upon the intensity of parking down near the restaurants, at what point would you establish that boundary, a certain number of blocks from a radius? Because like, I'm at one end of Baltimore Park, and that parking intensity doesn't affect me. So would you include, say, all the way down to Alexander, for example, as, as being part of that? So I think the reason that they're asking for the permit would tie into the natural geographical boundaries as a result of it.
I would generally agree. I think, I envision this as the, the petitioners and staff have to have a long dialogue about what's the public policy concern that's trying to be addressed. You've indicated in different ways throughout this process that this isn't a program that you created so that folks could control the parking in their neighborhood and keep people out. The purpose was to identify public policy concerns, genuine public nuisance or health that threaten safety that this type of program would help mitigate. And so I think that's how we would apply our analysis, is what's the appropriate boundaries of this area to offset whatever that social impact or that public impact is that we're trying to mitigate. So to, to your point, knowing where you reside, you are pretty far from any impact that this letter's referencing, so you probably wouldn't be in what staff would ultimately draw as a logical boundary.
Anyone else? Okay, and, and Dan, I agree with Catherine. I think it would be great to have our own petition written up, so then they can, yeah, okay. I'm going to take this question and move it on to, to the public comment area. What should qualify a neighborhood or area to have a preferential parking system? Anyone want to comment on that question? Please state your name and address.
Yeah, Cheryl Tenasovich. I'm at 205 Montevista. So I'm in the few blocks that's very highly impacted by the parking, due to the restaurants and especially the staff of the restaurants. We've talked to the people who park in our neighborhood, and they usually come in around noon. They may leave at midnight. And we live in a very old house that has no off-street parking at all. And so we are very impacted if we have no place near our home to park, if we're carrying groceries or briefcases or whatever, musical instruments in my husband's case. And I realize that it's very different in our end of the street than, than down in Larry Chu's neighborhood. And so it seems like these petitions might be more appropriate to be block by block because it's only a few-block area, it seems, that's highly impacted with this. But it is really a nuisance for us, and it's only been in the last few years that it's just gotten to be really a problem. I appreciate you addressing this, though.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Milo Sanga, also live at 205. The only thing I would have to add to, to that would be that I would like to underscore Mr. Hill's statement that he thought that a 75% requirement would, is a little high, considering the difficulty of getting people, you know, interested. There may be people that are impacted, but just not that interested. So I would underscore his advocacy of a lower threshold.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, so sorry, we were waiting for our babysitter to come, so I don't know what we missed.
I'm happy you're here.
I'm Laura Gray. We live at 432 William Avenue in Larkspur, and we are affected mostly by the student parking. And in short, it starts at 7:30 in the morning with loitering, loud music, smoking, staring at us as we're trying to get our kids out to school. They come back in the afternoon for lunch, more loitering, eating in the car, smoking in the car, more loud music, throwing their lunch out the window, left for us to clean up. And then they come back after school, and they zip down the street at 35, 40 miles an hour, more loitering, voicing, screaming at each other as they drive by. It's just a terrible nuisance, to say the least. There's no guest parking. Our nanny can't park on the street. Guests, there's, there's no room. We're often blocked. They're parked, they're very aggressive, so we can't get in and out of our own driveway. We can, but it's difficult and challenging at times. It's just uncomfortable, and it just doesn't feel like we should be living in a parking lot, basically, so.
So I have a question for you.
Please.
Since the new regulations at the school, not leaving for lunch, has it gotten any better at all?
I think, so we've lived on Heather, in Heather Gardens, for three years, and then we moved to William for, we've lived there for two years. I'd actually say it's been worse. I understand that the students who are granted permits to park at Redwood, they're not allowed to leave. But it seems like the kids who are parking on William all, every school day, up and down, I have pictures, which I'm happy to send to you. It's worse, and they're like rushing to, they get there early, so at 7:30, they're there, playing their music, smoking, and sitting in their cars. It's really uncomfortable. My kids have said, why are they, I mean, literally outside our front door, sitting in their car, watching us go to school? And, and then at lunch, they're speeding because they've had to walk from school to their car, and they've got, I don't know how long, but they're in a big hurry. Or they just sit there and smoke and eat and play their music. So no.
One more question. Have you gone to the school and complained to the school?
I have not.
And why haven't you done that?
I didn't really know that I could.
That's really important to do.
Okay.
Because this is truly a school issue. You live in Larkspur. We care for your neighborhood, but it's really a school problem
Okay.
That we're taking on, trying to figure out how to assist. But it's, it's something that they need to truly take care of.
Yeah, I guess those people are going to drive, they just need to put their cars somewhere, so.
But thank you for coming and sharing that with us.
Sorry if I was repetitive.
No, 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 appreciate it. Anyone else?
So can I just ask? Would that be then, that's a perfect example of a neighborhood, Heather Gardens, because it's a really defined area. There are areas in, on that particular Williams Street where you have curbside adjacent to the homes, and then we have the area that is non-curbed, sort of grassland area that people park on. Would we also consider, that would be also considered parking areas within that neighborhood jurisdiction, even though it's not curb frontage? Or am I just doing semantics here?
I think each parking situation and public policy concern is different, and I can't give you a definitive answer. Each one would have to be analyzed for what's the behavior we want to mitigate
Okay.
And what's the appropriate regulations. For example, this last speaker is voicing the same types of concerns that Riviera Circles expressed to you. And one of the effects we know will occur when we put in regulations is we'll push the problem
Somewhere else.
Somewhere else. So that is a challenge. The, that actually, that second comment fits for what the other speakers are bringing up. But the mitigation of employees' parking may be very different than the mitigation of high school children parking because of the nature of the behavior. And we have to look at each one as it comes up, and we have to look at each neighborhood's specific logistics. Yeah.
Great. Sure. Kevin?
I just wanted to agree. This, this is definitely an issue that the school district needs to show leadership on, but their jurisdiction is limited. So we do have an important role to play in terms of providing, you know, a sense of security and protection to the neighborhoods that are impacted by this issue. The school can't do that.
Well, I'm not denying that. I just want to make sure the school's involved also.
I, I agree with that completely. I think it's, it's extremely important.
It's a, it's a team effort, teamwork.
We can't, we, we've got to take leadership on this issue.
Absolutely. I agree. So Dan, have we got to do it all on that question one? Do you need more?
I, I generally heard consensus from the council in support of the staff recommendation, so I interpreted that to be the case.
Okay. How about that 75% comment? Do we want to? Go ahead, Catherine.
I was just wondering, the 75% variable. I don't recall how we came up with the 75% as the, did you markation line?
Most programs we looked at, that was a very common number.
Okay.
I think most of the programs have a fairly high number, because while I appreciate the speaker's point, I think the public policy perspective is the threshold should be high because you're taking a public good and restricting the public's access to that good.
Thank you.
So.
Okay, so is that enough information for you? Council, anyone make any more comments?
Just some nods to show consensus on that.
I'm fine with staff recommendation.
Yep, great. I think we, we all, we all do. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So Dan, we'll move on to question number two. Should parking restriction be no parking without a permit, or should parking be allowed for a period of time for vehicles without a permit? Want to?
Yeah, so we actually think that this will probably end up being a case-by-case issue. We put this question in here because it was raised by a lot of speakers to you at various times during public discussion, but I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all answer here. So this is one we would suggest you leave to staff's discretion. What, what we think probably makes sense in the Riviera Circle neighborhood that we've told you is no parking without a permit. And essentially, we would just come once and cite violators. And that's because right now, there's sort of a funny mishmash in the neighborhood with some 20-minute signs, which requires two visits. It's an odd interval. But those intervals, when you're dealing with the high school kids, have to be shorter than their class period to actually curb the behavior. So these are the types of things we're looking at, and that's why here we, we heard the public. This question really came from the public, and we think it should be part of the analysis process.
So would that then allow discretion to do a time-restricted permit?
Yeah.
So let's say if, if it's a neighborhood, that's primary concern is business park, business or employees' parking there, could it be no parking without a permit from nine to five, or?
Well, we, you know, if we receive a petition, and there's a lot of signs here that we might for some of the neighborhoods near this part of Magnolia, I know in Mill Valley, it's four-hour parking
Right.
On the side streets, and that's to try to specifically address employees who are working eight-hour shifts. So that's the type of thing we'd like to have the discretion to look at, rather than have a one-size-fits-all approach.
Oh, okay. That's what you're asking. Okay. Anyone else have a question for, for Dan? No? I'll go to the public. Anybody from the public want to discuss this question with us? I see none. So Dan, it sounds like, it sounds like we agree that we'll leave it to the staff discretion. All right, number three. How many parking permits should be issued to any one property?
Yeah, so this is one where staff's changed its position from hearing from some of the public feedback. Initially, we had, after looking at a lot of programs, suggested what we had seen in Nevada, which was most households are eligible for four permits total, two that are considered what we'd call permanent, that are assigned to the car, to the vehicle, and then two that are what are often called visitor, which allows the property owner to, to hand them to somebody to use that permit. But after sort of listening to some of the concerns from folks about, you know, I own so many cars, or my children have cars, and thinking about the, the challenges and public policy questions that Mayor may not raise, we thought it might make more sense to say, if you have a car registered to the address, you should be able to get a permanent permit for that vehicle. That's certainly simpler for us to administer, so. So that was part of our suggestion, was to do that. And then we also have put in here that perhaps each address should still be eligible for up to two visitor permits. And then lastly, we'd like consideration from the council that to resolve an issue that's been raised, which is folks coming into the neighborhoods to provide services to homes, such as landscapers, that display of a valid business license, which they should be in possession of, whether they all are doing that or not, they are supposed to be, would serve as a parking permit.
Okay. Dan Hemmer?
Is there any?
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the, in an analysis, not so much the neighborhood, but when somebody asks for the permits, could there be an assessment as to whether they're using their onsite parking as opposed to just parking, as opposed to just, uh, doing other things with their, what would be, otherwise be required off-site parking on their property, and then throwing all their cars onto the street? How can we kind of do some, kind of a means assessment while we're considering giving these permits for use of street parking? Is that, is that within our capability?
It's fairly labor-intensive, so, um, I definitely would revisit the last question, which is how much you want to charge for this program, because that would require site visits to really determine, you know, I think. Otherwise, we could go on this neighborhood by planning zoning standards, it's supposed to have X number of, uh, off-street parking available. We can certainly work off of that. I do think you had speakers point out that some of the off-street parking in Larkspur are in homes that were built in the 50s and 60s, when vehicles were a different size than they are now. And so they may show up on papers having a two-vehicle garage, and not in reality have a garage large enough to park two contemporary vehicles. So that would raise some complications, I think. You might get folks who want to appeal those numbers, but we could certainly work on that if that's something.
Well, I'm mainly concerned in areas where there's limited access already and substandard street widths, where new homes are being built, where requiring off-street parking, two-car garages, plus two in the driveway, and then they put all their cars on the already constrained streets. I think it's a public safety issue, actually, especially in hillside neighborhoods, not to mention my neighborhood, which has got 14-foot-wide streets. I just think there's a, a ra, a reasonableness to this, that we should be careful to try to keep it in mind, anyway, because there could be an abuse to this, if we're not careful.
Um, I understand what the council member's saying. The abuse you're describing though exists now, in the unregulated situation, so I, I would want time to work on the answer to your question, because you're proposing essentially adding a different regulatory element to the program, because the behavior you're describing now already exists. Folks may own five cars and not use their garage at all. That, that exists now. So the, if, if one of the added values you want of this program is to mitigate that as a, as a nuisance issue, or a social, a public policy concern, we just would want to take that back, I think, and, and think that through for a bit, to propose something.
Or Dan, are you saying, don't, don't have, don't allow so many permits to be given per household? Limit the amount?
I just, in the, in the permit application process, it would be helpful to, to know that, uh, we're not making a condition, a neighborhood situation worse. I just want to make, I want, I want the process and our approach to designing the process to be considerate of that.
I, I would, I think I would say in response to Councilmember Hemmer, the purpose of the program is for folks to petition that there's behavior in on-street parking that is creating either a nuisance or a public policy concern. And so, um, the purpose of the program's not to petition to clear the road so that I can park, I, I, the property owner can park my cars in the street. And so, I think, again, we'd have to, if you adopt the program as we've kind of proposed, that staff would be looking at what's going on in the neighborhood to determine what's the public policy question that we're trying to mitigate. Folks who've come to you now have not come to you and said, I need more on-street parking for myself. They've said, there are behaviors in my neighborhood utilizing on-street parking that I don't think were appropriate for my residential neighborhood. Um, I, I get where you're going. I, right now, I'd say the program's designed around the idea that staff's analysis would serve as a defense from.
I, I just don't think I should be able to go get four permits if I want to make my driveway a basketball court. It's not fair to my neighbors. Or to turn your garage into an extra room. Yeah. I think where there are already constraint conditions, I don't want to make it worse. That's all. And if we, if there's a way, if there's no way to put a check in this, you'll tell me that, too.
Well, I, I understand where you're going, Councilmember Hemmer. I, I think we could create that program for you. I'm just offering up, you're proposing regulating a different public policy question than the one being posed by the folks who are asking for the program.
I understand.
Okay. Larry?
I'm going to continue that with a couple different points, though. With the Green Bay Marina, we know that there's a safety element on top of it. So if you exclude that, but look at other potential applications of it, in, in large part, you know, if you're near the business districts, for example, it, it is to provide for a higher turnover of cars, which gives the residents more opportunities to park closer to their home. But that doesn't automatically guarantee it. But if I look at flat land properties in our neighborhood, exclusive of the example that was given by one of the previous speakers, all, all our homes pretty much have at least one off-street parking space usable. It, it's just the way Baltimore Park is designed. But if they choose to turn it into living space, or not use it at all, for whatever reason, for storage, and, and I've seen that up and down the neighborhood, then that in and of itself is exacerbating the parking situation. And then, of course, you know, we brought up even the public safety aspect of it in the fire council, you know, discussions about, you know, where appropriate places are to park on the streets, and if people are not using their parking spaces up there, then it is creating a, a, a public safety issue. So, yeah, there are a lot of different public policies here at Ploy.
Yes. I do think, though, we're getting to where we're talking about neighborhoods that I don't think staff would ever accept a petition from, because the neighborhoods where these problems are occurring are the ones that have the type of parking that's inviting to a next-door use. Mostly, the problems right now are around the high school, and that's a consistent thing we saw when we looked around. Schools are the biggest challenge. Um, the other neighborhoods that are saying they'd be affected are being affected by the business, the workers trying to find parking, and those are, for the most part, reasonably large, wide streets. The narrower streets that you're talking about, I, I'm having a hard time imagining that we would consider valid a petition to limit the parking by outsiders, when it's not really a problem. But I, I, I'm not aware of a, a neighborhood up in the hills, for example, right now, where we're getting a lot of complaints that, on a daily basis, people are parking in their neighborhood and causing public policy issues.
Well, just the lower part of Madron, because that is in the radius of where workers park because they work at the restaurants.
The fact is, we, the, the fact is, we don't know what sort of applications we're going to see until we see them. Every trailhead might end up creating, I mean, once, once the tool becomes available, I, I think we're going to learn just how interested people are. And I think we ought to make the rules, be, be ready to make the rules considerate of something that broad, because every district, every neighborhood of the city becomes eligible.
That's why we have staff discretion, yeah?
I, I agree. I'm just.
That's good. No, it's, it's an interesting discussion. Anyone else? Kevin?
Uh, just, just very briefly. I, I'm very sympathetic to the concerns that Councilmember Hemmer has raised, because we have that in our neighborhood over in Green Bay, all over the place. At the same time, I worry about trying to solve too many problems at, at once, and I think the, um, the staff recommendation here is appropriate, and will allow us to deal with the problem that the community has raised, and allow us time to deal with some of these other considerations, which frankly raise land use considerations that go beyond just what we're going to deal with parking. So, um, I'm happy to go forward with what we got.
Okay.
All right. I need to open to the public. Anybody else want to discuss this? Number question three? I see none. So Dan, do you have enough to go by with that? And more?
I think on this one, Madam Mayor, might be helpful to, to poll the councils more specifically, because I didn't quite hear what the consensus was or wasn't around the parameters.
Okay.
I, I'm supportive of the staff recommendation.
Which is, can you articulate it, and then we'll know for sure.
As, as written.
So the staff recommendation would be cars registered to the property are eligible for a permanent permit, and then that address is eligible for two visitor.
And we're not putting a restricted number of four or two?
Permits.
We're saying per registered vehicle at that address. Everybody agree with that?
That's correct. And then, don't forget about the having the business license also.
And the business license would serve as a, a parking permit for landscapers and other folks coming in the neighborhood to provide services.
Great. Okay.
Just, just one question on the, on the latter one. How, how does that actually going to work in terms of, like, landscapers, for example, who are coming in to the community from elsewhere? How are they going to really know that that's something they're going to need to do? Is that just the homeowner's responsibility to ensure that?
I think we'll have to educate the neighborhoods when they be, when these programs are put in place, that that's an option, that they should be discussing with the service provider, so the service provider avoids getting a ticket. I mean, the other option is for everyone who uses that service provider to, to arrange to give them a visitor permit constantly. That's just a logistic challenge that we're trying to help mitigate. So they have that as another option.
Yeah, sure.
If they're home all day, they can say, here, go use this permit while you're here.
But the bottom line is, it's the homeowner's responsibility to make sure that whoever's coming and doing whatever work they're doing are going to be in compliance with our requirements.
Right. I think one of the fundamental issues here is because you're essentially allowing a private property owner to control a public good for some period of time, they then take on some responsibility.
Exactly.
To mitigate the impact on folks they've invited into the neighborhood.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Larry.
At, at a minimum, do you ask for, like, the registration during the application?
Uh, I can confirm that with the chief. I believe they do check to make sure it's a valid registration of the address.
And that way you don't get somebody's friend in Tiburon using a Larkspur Marina address.
I will double-check.
So is that more specific?
The friend who comes and cuts the grass on the weekend.
All right. We've got question number four. Should the passes be issued annually or for the lifetime of the vehicle? What fee should be charged for a permit? Two questions.
Yeah, so, um, we looked at different programs to see what they did. Most programs issue the permits annually, um, and that has two values. One is it sort of allows for continual education about the existence of the program, and secondly, it also allows for monitoring how many permits are out in the neighborhood and where they've been distributed. There are some programs that issue the permits when the property owner comes in and says, I bought a new car, and they just say, here's your permit. Thank you very much. So there are, they do exist. They're less common. Um, but we would recommend going to an annual program. We think it would be a lot of value for us to sort of have some knowledge of who we've been issuing these permits to. Um, and then, secondly, the question of the fee, um, as I told the council in the workshop, my impression, doing this research, is that in most cities, not all, the larger cities have very robust programs, they're looking at this fee all the time. These fees are quite expensive in some of the larger cities.
$300.
Um, in cities like Larkspur, it does appear they sort of get set and kind of forgotten about, and so they sort of sit at whatever they were set at when they were launched. They seem to tend to be increments of $10, so 10, 20, 30, 40, $50, as we looked around the state. In Marin, Nevada, I think, has the highest we saw, which is $30 a year for their, per permit. Um, that seemed to be the, the top end of what we had seen. Sandra Fel looked at this program, at putting this in several years ago. They couldn't settle on the fee, because they knew that to do anything, even remotely looking like an offset to their costs, it was going to go into the $100 range, and there was a lot of, uh, pushback about the fee being that high. So, um, this is really something the council needs to, to give some thought to, and, and give us some feedback on what you think's an appropriate fee. There are still programs that don't charge for this and treat it, uh, as an item to be provided as a subsidy, so that's also an option to you.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Dan. So Councilman Hemmer, will we start with you with, with?
I want to hear public comment.
Okay.
Oh, can I just ask a question about this?
Of course. Please do.
If I recall, when Chief Norton spoke, he said this is, would be handled, the, the permit and the fee process through the CMPA? Or am I?
He's prepared to do it with his staff.
He's prepared to handle that.
We would help, but, yeah.
Okay. And do we, in our jurisdiction of the three cities, are there already street permits that are in San Anselmo or in Corder Madera that are handled through the CMPA?
Um, I don't know the full breadth of that. I do know from talking to the chief, there are quite a few different parking rules in San Anselmo that are very specific and very distinct and to different neighborhoods. And he has told me they enforce them all.
Uh-huh.
And engage the citizenry. Uh, I'm not as, I don't recall in conversation about anything specific in Corder Madera.
I just want to make, see if we have a, a comparison fee schedule with one of our jurisdictional areas.
No, and you have to recall, the most significant parking program in Sandra Fel, I mean, San Anselmo involves parking meters.
Right.
It's a different.
And the downtown corridor.
And some of the nearby parking lots, yes.
Kevin, do you have a question?
Just a, a quick question. Uh, so the, the recommendation for staff is a, it's a $50 fee?
Yes.
Annually, yeah.
And I just seem to recall from our past discussions of this issue, that that's in itself not likely to cover our costs for enforcement?
It's unlikely, uh, to cover our costs. Um, I, I don't think you could probably set, I, I think you'd have the same experience I relayed Sandra Fel had, if we tried to start to calculate up to what it would probably cost us to administer fully. Now, I will say, we are hopeful, based on Nevada's experience, that active enforcement in the few, first few years led to a significant tapering in the behavior, so enforcement became less expensive over time. Um, and I think that, we, talking to Nevada, they'll probably see it ratchet up, they're sort of expecting as generational turnover occurs, and they'll have to go out and enforce significantly for a few more years, and then it'll die down again, and they, they expect to be kind of a cycle like that.
I, I guess my point is, even, even at, at this level, which may provide a little bit of a sticker shock to some folks who may have to confront paying these charges, it still entails, in all likelihood, some subsidy by the city, essentially.
Yes. All the, I, I, I'm not proposing a, a number that isn't a subsidy, yes.
Yes. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Dan Hemmer?
Do we know how many permits are being regulated in Nevada?
I do not.
Uh, order of magnitude? Just to get the size of their program?
They have three parking districts. They're all very small, defined areas around one of the high schools.
They're all single-family neighborhoods?
Yes. I believe so.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Before we, uh, make decisions here, we'll go out to the public. Any public comment about the annual or lifetime permit or the fee? Please do.
Yeah. Sandra Rulufson, Orchid Drive in Larkspur. And if I'm understanding you correctly, um, so homeowners have four cars, and they could pay for four permits? Is that right? And so, uh, we, taxpayers would be subsidizing, if we have to make up for this money that this program costs, would be subsidizing people to have more cars and to park them on the street. That's what I understood.
Madam Mayor, can I? I'm sorry to, I want to clarify your, your comment.
Okay.
You asked if a homeowner had four cars, they could get four permits. My understanding is it's two resident vehicles and two guest permits.
How many?
No, we had, uh, we had modified our recommendation to be cars registered at the address.
Okay.
Need a permit.
Thank you for helping me clarify that.
Yes, and I'm just not in favor of that. As a taxpayer, I don't want to subsidize people for being able to park on the street if their family owns four cars and they don't park them in their garage. park them in their garage or on their driveway. I, we have some issues with that in our neighborhood, and I'm just not in favor of that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I see none. All right, council members. Dan, can I start with you now? What, how do you feel about all this?
Well, I think, I think the process is going to lead us to creating a program where we're going to learn about what works and what doesn't. And I would like that program to have enough, I don't want to use the word flexibility, but that's the only word I can think of now, for us to be able to review problems as they arise, including things such as impacts like what I described earlier and what the, the member of the public just described. So I'm in favor of the staff recommendation. I know it's, it's the outcome of a thoughtful process to date. And they, we're getting requests to take action, which I think is fair, given some of the conditions. But I want to make, I want to be able to create the right fit for this over time, if that's possible.
Thank you. Larry Chu?
I'm just, I was just reading your staff report, and you had mentioned that, you know, the annual cost would run about thirteen thousand dollars. And, you know, as, as things start to, you know, take on some permanency and people get used to the enforcement and all that, you, you think that the, possibly that the cost could go down to seventy-eight hundred?
I think as the behavior curves or trips out by a police officer should start to taper off. So there'll be busy years and there'll be less busy years.
It's probably too much trouble to try and figure this out as part of our annual fee review.
Yeah, I don't know if the mayor would like me to maybe comment for a second on the concepts of subsidy.
Please do.
I know I'm going to bore the audience, but they don't come to the, to the budget meeting where I talk a lot to you about subsidies.
How much subsidy is one?
So, you know, the, the exercise of government is subsidy. And we do, about half our activity is subsidy. And what your job as a council is to decide when to subsidize because the goal is to provide a public good or offset a public nuisance. And code enforcement is of nuisance, to abate nuisance is probably the most subsidized thing we do. We, we don't come close to recovering costs when we put stop to nuisance. Whether that's because people aren't following leash laws in the park, whether they're making too much noise at a party, or whether they're parking in an area we've decided they shouldn't be parking in, we never recover what we spend to do that abatement. But the collective good is to keep a balanced and mature community. And there are times when we have to create these programs that are very targeted, even though we know there's a cost in excess of what we're going to spend, because it's to send a message that the community values certain things. So that's how I look at it. And I, I get sometimes casual with the use of subsidy. And I know the council knows that because I tell you, it's not a bad word. I mean, that's what the exercise of government really is, the distribution of subsidy. So that's what we're talking about here. And I think, I think if we get too fixated on cost recovery, we'll lose sight of the public policy question we're trying to deal with.
And there is no cost recovery anyway, I mean?
We won't fully recover costs. This is a, you know, sometimes fees, sometimes fees are to offset some of your costs and to remind folks, there is a cost. And also, in this case, this particular abatement of public nuisance comes with privilege. There's a privilege attached to this. And some of this fee is to say, you're receiving a public privilege from this program.
By definition, it is, the fact that it's a fee suggests that it's a privilege for a specific benefit to the one who gets that service.
And it is. There's definitely, as we talked about in the earliest item on this, there's an element of public privilege here for which there is no ability to assign a cost. There is no value I can assign to it. I don't know what the value is of having a time restriction where you can park but other people can't. I don't know how to calculate that, really. I could, I could probably go into San Francisco and find out what they charged for that privilege in a parking garage, but I don't think that's what we want to do. We're not San Francisco.
And these are not gated communities, are they, Dan?
Which is a whole nother discussion.
That's a whole nother discussion, yes.
So, I just wanted to make sure. I sometimes do forget that subsidy can cause a different reaction to folks who haven't gotten accustomed to hearing me talk about it.
Appreciate that, thank you.
If I may.
Please do.
Since I was the one who used the word subsidy, I apologize for that.
I did too.
Did you? Okay, well, then we both did. And part of the reason I mentioned it in the way that I did was to make very much the same point that you were, you were making. There's a balance that needs to be struck in programs like this in terms of obtaining, you know, reimbursement for costs, but also for making sure that we're providing the public goods that we're, we're elected and hired to do. So that's the reason I made that, that comment. So, thank you.
And I also, as a, as a person who parks in my driveway and parks on the street, no one has to buy parking permits for all their cars. If you, you only need to buy ones for cars you plan on parking in the street during the period of restriction. So that should be kept in mind. I think a lot of folks do park in their driveway and may decide, I don't want to pay this fee. And that's another reason to have some fee and have it be some fee that they have to at least give some thought to.
Right, good point. Catherine, do you have a comment to make?
You know, I think I would like to echo Councilmember Homer's comment that we really, I mean, this is the first time we've done this within our jurisdiction, and we'll have to see how it goes as far as how its work rolls out in various neighborhoods. And I also want us to be mindful of how it may impact our neighbors. For instance, in Corder Madera, as people get pushed further and further out from a certain area. And I think revisiting it and really reevaluating, like we like to do with some of our ordinance, would be a valid plan. So I echo that with you, Dan, also. I think the staff recommendations are fine, and the way that we've really had a chance to discuss them and debate the public policy component of this, I think has been relevant. So I like this. I think a fifty dollar permit is just going to be where we have to start on an annual basis.
All right. And I agree with the staff recommendation, but I do think the cost's a little high. And I, I would recommend thirty dollars per permit. So I just want to throw that out there.
And, and what would that be based on?
Well, right now, I know that the Marina, for an example, they're, they're paying five dollars per permit. And they're also, it's a lifetime. So I just think fifty dollars, in my opinion, sounds like a lot of money. And we're not here to make money. We do need some to, to offset the, the cost of, of police, et cetera, but, and the signage, all. But I just think fifty dollars does sound like quite a bit per permit. So that's, that's my two cents.
Straw vote?
Let's do a straw vote, all right. So do we want to keep it at staff recommendation at fifty dollars per permit? Or do we want to, do we want to keep it at fifty dollars?
Fifty dollars would be my recommendation.
That would be mine, too.
Staff recommendation?
All right.
I'm okay with the fifty.
There you go. All said and done. All right, Dan, is that enough for you?
Yeah, so just to clarify, I'm sure folks may be interested in what's next. So you did already adopt an ordinance. So there is actually an ordinance in place to work on these programs. What you've done tonight is given us the direction to write up some guiding policies that we'll publish for the public, and we'll create the application you suggested for doing a petition. And we will now work to bring you something with parameters for the neighbor that's already petitioned us, which is the Marina neighborhood. So we'll have those things happening simultaneously probably over the next two weeks and get the, get all of this launched and going.
Great, look forward to that. Thank you, Dan.
Good job.
All right, nice discussion. All right, move on to eight point two, the mid-year budget review. Where's Kathy? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Kathy, just climb over, everybody.
Yeah, with the broken head.
We're happy you're feeling better.
We're proud tonight.
We do. We love crowds.
Okay, well, it's not long.
So we've made reference to Kathy several times. So for the benefit of the whole audience, this is Administrative Services Director Kathy Orm. And I'll be kind of chiming in periodically with some additional thoughts.
Good evening, Mayor Morrison and council members. Good to see you tonight while we have the lights on. I have a brief presentation of where we are at mid-year, as I do every year. So I will get right to it through the agenda. We have just a few things to cover. And a lot of this will be as a recapping, as always, where we are and where we need to be. The economy currently is still going pretty strong. I mean, the U.S. employment rate is down. It's the lowest it's been in, since nineteen sixty-nine, which is pretty incredible. But on the flip side of that, we also are seeing inflation beginning to creep in. Just as an example, that was given for, from Uni Services is that your Starbucks brewed coffee has gone up eight point nine percent from the last year. That's quite an increase. I thought that was a good stat to bring in.
Is that what they use in Uni Services?
They did. They use that from Uni Services. I thought that was, I liked that. California home sales, you know, they started to decrease. It's beginning to slow down. It's down two point nine percent from August to August. So I am beginning to see some softening, you know, some of the revenues just being flatter. It's a little early to tell, but I think some of the signs are there that we are, have, you know, little softening signs. Our mid-year revenue accounts, our property tax, of course, we got a property tax in December. So again, I, I saw our property tax for our December come in a little flat from last year. This is part of the softening I'm talking about. Our sales tax looks very strong. This is because the state of California underwent an implementation of new software system, got behind in their payments, started catching up, have kind of undergone a whole change in their department because they are now known as the California Tax, Tax and Fee Administration now. So we're seeing a little bump now from some back payments and some catch-up. But our sales tax is still strong and holding its own even without the, the back payments. So we're still good there. And the other taxes, the most of that is from the TOT, the Hotel Occupancy Tax. Our business license tax hasn't started rolling in yet, but that will be in the next couple of months. And everything else is pretty much normal. Oh, I do want to also go over, the license, is a license and building permits. We had two major permits taken out. One was for the County Mart, and the other one is for Drake's Cove. That make up most of that revenue there. So mid-year percent remaining to collect of fifty-one percent, we're, we're right on target. This is a overall picture of our property, or of our tax, property tax, of course, being our largest supporter, was followed by sales tax and other taxes. This is a look at our general fund expenditures by department. So our PERS lump sum, we pay off, we're fortunate to pay it every July. And then, so by paying that, we do save, our, the twenty-seven thousand, as the increase or decrease there, is our savings for being able to pay that and not have to pay interest on the PERS lump sum payments. Citywide contract services coming in right on target. And the OPEB, I do not transfer that money until the end of the year. So I can collect interest on what we are, until we can have that sent to Seabird. The rest of the departments are coming in or under our fifty percent for the most part. So I have to, you know, give our, my cohorts the congratulations for keeping everything under control. Although we do have some departments that are cyclical, that you'll see spiking up towards the summer. But everybody's always come in on, on or under budget. So our remaining budget to collect for all departments is fifty percent. So again, we're right on track. What does this really look like in a pie chart? Unlike the visuals, police and fire, our public support is our two main expenditure departments. So budget challenges. So again, this is nothing new that we've talked about. Over the last few years, we've built up our reserves. And by our, our reserve policy, our current budget, we should be collect, have twenty-five percent, which would be the four point three million. And we have an additional reserve of three point two. And although that sounds great, we also do have some other reserve uses, which is our, we have upcoming MOU obligations that will be about a hundred and ten thousand. That'll happen in July. We have general fund mid-year adjustments. So when we brought our budget to you last June, I brought it with a deficit of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And then we also have additional budget adjustments that the departments have asked for, mainly in contract services, for about a hundred and seventy-four. So that would be an additional adjustment to the general fund for four hundred and sixty-three, for the comments, okay. And then, of course, we are ongoing with our on-air bridge. And so we receive reimbursements back from the federal. So at any given time, we could be seeing three to five million dollars that we have output and expenses and paid contractors for that we are waiting for money to come back. So that's my biggest concern, is to make sure we have the cash flow to keep our bridge being paid for and while we're waiting for our reimbursements.
And Kathy, how long is that wait typically?
Oh, usually it takes about ten, I would say, three months.
Wow, is that right?
They say up to ninety days.
So I want to underscore that point for the benefit of folks who haven't heard talks before about the bridge. We pay all the bills ahead of time. And so there's a huge difference between budget and cash. And there are times when we are very cash poor right now to manage that bridge project. So we are very fortunate that the council gave us the latitude to be very aggressive in putting money in the reserve in preparation for the bridge project because we are, that cash is coming in and out at a staggering pace. And we're going to make it because we planned for it, but it's, it's challenging. So when folks see some of these big numbers, doesn't mean that money's just sitting in the bank not doing anything right now. Also, I didn't have Kathy put in the slideshow because details were still fuzzy when we made this presentation. But we do know we have two significant things looming. One is, we've been notified that the way we're going to be treated, and this is true for all of Marin, for our stormwater permit, is going to be at a higher level than we hoped it would be. So be prepared for a seven-figure cost at some point for stormwater drain improvements that we currently don't have. So that someday may be coming out of that excess reserve. The other thing is, the council knows, we're still obligated on an old settlement to complete ADA improvements on Magnolia. We've been making steady progress. We're doing quite a few of them this year. But the one big chunk that's left is the downtown, and that hopefully isn't a seven-figure number, but it, it could be. And that, this may again be where we have to go to get that if we can't find other sources of money. So it's a great picture, and I'm really thrilled to be in this position versus where some of our fellow agencies are. But I just want folks to know, there's not a huge pot of money to, to plan to use for anything other than some of these big-ticket issues that are out there.
Just a quick.
Kevin?
Just a.
Just a comment and a question. The comment is, I just have consistently felt very proud of the way in which this city has managed its finances in a conservative way in anticipation for unanticipated challenges that we have had to confront. And I just really think we're doing a great job, and I want to compliment Kathy and Dan and everyone who's involved in that process. The question is, and maybe this is hypothetical, I hope it's not, that in contrast to the way we approach finances, the federal government goes about things in a different way, particularly recently. And the concern that I have particularly with the federal shutdown that we've experienced and the prospect that we may experience that again, hopefully that may only raise cash flow considerations as opposed to actual ability to get reimbursed for some of these expenses. But could you comment on possible risks that we may have to deal with because of the uncertainties in the way in which the federal government is managing its business?
I'm into it. So Julian can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the federal government has, gives rather a large pot of money to the state who acts as the California Administrator through Caltrans of the federal program the bridge is qualified under. So I believe there's a pot of money that should be sufficient at the state to keep the money flowing to us. Now, I suppose there's an end to that if all the projects all through the state that are being funded out of that pot are hitting that number pretty hard and the federal government doesn't backfill it. Because I think they replenish that pot on an annual basis. But unless I'm wrong, they should probably have enough set aside for our project, which is a staggering project for us. It's the biggest financial project we've ever done, but it's kind of budget dust in this Caltrans program. So...
I understand, but people are playing all kinds of games.
They are.
And I just, you know, just want to make sure we appreciate, as I know you do, that there are risks associated with that process.
Yeah, and I appreciate your bringing that up.
I think I, Madam Mayor, I think I'd like to also echo those two concerns of the mandates that we may have, we will face, which are the ADA mandates to do the upgrades to our public spaces in the downtown area is not optional. And neither is the storm drain, which is a state law, and that's not optional. So we have to be mindful that we have mandates that come from both the state and the federal that have to be prioritized because they are not allowed to be flexible. And I just want community to understand that those are the constraints that we often have to look at when we prioritize other projects, too.
Anyone else? No? Okay. I'm going to also reflect with what Kevin said. I think the staff has been excellent. To have a general fund reserve at 46% is pretty impressive. So Kathy, do you have any more?
I do, very quickly.
Sure.
This is what our cash flow kind of looks like. So to give everybody an idea, so this is, you know, property tax-driven. We, you know, December and April are months I live for. So why I'm concerned about cash flow, here's a picture. So we do have some other challenges, like we were talking about, this is, these are always our ongoing, is the Marina Maintenance. We're going to front up some expenditures for that. We have also, of course, we've talked about the deferred maintenance of our firehouses and our City Hall building here. And then, of course, the 50-50 Plan. I don't know, Dan, if you want to go into any further detail on any of these?
No, I think, as I mentioned, the one that's looming now is we got a firm message we're going to be on the high-cost side on the storm drain regulations, so. Well, I don't want to go too deep in the woods, but I've, as you've heard before, I think it's, is it a quarter, Julian? You're supposed to make sure nothing larger than a quarter can get through the storm drains now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard a cigarette butt.
Is it a cigarette butt? Oh, Julian's nodding cigarette butt. Quarter's too big.
Okay. Kathy, is that it? Are you, nicely done. Thank you. Council members, any questions? No? All right, I'll bring it out to the public. Anybody from the public have a question about our midterm budget? I see none. Okay. So Dan, you just don't need an adoptive resolution, all right? You need an adoptive resolution?
I'll move the staff recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? I see none.
I would just note, Madam Mayor, some years we don't ask you to adopt a resolution, and that's because we're going to find the money by working the budget. This is a year where we have a number-one-time expenses that we itemized in the staff report. So if folks are interested, there are ones we don't have a funding source for, and they have to be done.
And that's explained well in the form. So thank you. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 8.3. I think that's why we have so many people here tonight, which makes me smile. Action in support of the Larkspur Library and Community Center Task Force. We have a resolution passed. So Dan, may we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the, and council members, the mayor and council member Harof and I are working as a committee and having regular meetings with representatives of the Larkspur Library and Community Center Task Force. I think that's still our name. I heard they were working on something. And we've been making steady progress on a number of preliminary goals. Probably the most significant is several years ago, the city helped facilitate the creation of a 501(c)(3) so that when a community group stepped forward, there would be a vehicle for them to take over and use, to take on nonprofit donations. And so we were able to facilitate the installment of members of our community who have been participating in the task force as the officers of that entity. So that was very exciting. Now with that in place, the group has started to take in donations and has also been working to find a professional fundraiser to give them the advice they need to start to tackle the task of raising a sizable amount for the construction of the building and also to design the building. And the task force came up with a preliminary budget of what they thought they'd need to accomplish their goals in the first year, and then began talking to the city and some other groups about helping to fund that amount. They put in a request that's in your packet, which we discussed as a group, and came to the conclusion that we would generally support funding the amount. In this case, we zero, we rounded it to $150,000 as an installment from the city. But we suggested that rather than it be one lump sum, that we'd like to see the foundation use it as leverage and promote the idea of matching grants. And so we'd do an initial seed of $50,000 and then do $50,000 more when they've raised $50,000, and then $50,000 more when they've raised an additional $50,000. And that was to help them sort of promote the idea that the city's offering some support, but it needs to be leveraged by the donors in the community. So they were supportive of that. That's the way we've presented it to you here. But there is a question where that money should come from, so we're seeking some direction from the council. Staff looked across all of our available funds and money and felt there really are only two possible sources to draw the money from. One's the general fund reserve, which you just heard about in your last item, has quite a few demands on it at the moment, but it does have money available in it. The other fund that seemed appropriate to discuss is the Zimmer Fund, or Zimmer account that you had us set up with money that was donated by the Zimmer family estate. That money was donated with the donation saying it was for the Larkspur Library. That was it. There weren't any other parameters placed on the donation. And so the committee discussed it and felt that this activity was consistent with supporting the Larkspur Library. However, we did want to note that the account we created has been serving the library very well, generating interest for one-time expenditures, which is what you directed us to do with it. And so we don't want it to be viewed as this is where we're going to go constantly, because for the first time, the city has an endowment for the library that's really attacking some of the challenges that the library staff face every year and can deal with. So we've been really pleased to use the money as an endowment in that form and in that approach. So we're proposing this resolution, the release of $150,000. Probably the Administrative Service Director Kathy Orm and I will then look at the balance of the account and come back during the budget process to talk about our short- and long-term goals with the money. We haven't invested it particularly aggressively, and we've benefited from the fact that things have just been going really nicely with the economy. CDs have yielded reasonable returns, but we know we could do better if we had the latitude of longer-term investment. But as a note in the staff report, for a turn over to you, Madam Mayor, is that you had signaled when you told us to create that dedicated account that you might want some of the money to remain liquid just for this kind of conversation. And so we did leave sufficient monies liquid in that account, meaning we can access them tomorrow, so that you could have the kind of conversation we're proposing you have this evening. And I turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, Dan. Dan, I'd just like to add, and I think Kevin maybe also, the task force, this is a grassroots involvement where people have come together and they want to see a Larkspur Library Community Center put onto that Rose Lane, which it's, that's what it's, that's what the community said they wanted. So it's pretty exciting to have this group of people who've reached every board that exists in Larkspur and every commission and foundations. They went out and they got everyone's support and excitement and enthusiasm to go out and try to publicly raise this money privately, publicly, and just see a building be built. So to have this collaboration and enthusiasm and determination and make it happen, it's pretty impressive. So I really want to just thank all of you, many of you who are out there, that, thank you for bringing this to our attention and your involvement, and you make us all very excited because for the first time ever, I feel that this is attainable. We can see it happen. It's going to take time and patience, but the way you're going about it has just been so professional, and I just really appreciate all the efforts. And I know Kevin and I have worked closely with the task force and Dan Schwartz, and it's, it's, it makes me want to just continue running forward to reach our goal.
You know, if I could just add to that, Madam Mayor, I'm really grateful for the interaction that we've had with the community and those who have been involved in this process. I agree with you completely. It's been an exciting process. It's brought a level of energy to this project that I don't think we had before, and I've been very happy to be a part of the process. I also just wanted to reassure, in terms of the staff recommendation, in terms of the specifics of the resolutions, we did wrestle a lot with requests for money. We want to make sure that the city's engagement on a financial basis is undertaken in a thoughtful and prudent way and creates opportunities for us if things don't go exactly the way we all hope and believe they will go, that we're not overcommitting ourselves. And I think we've created a structure for doing that, and that that structure is reflected in the resolutions that are before us tonight. So thanks to the staff, thanks to the public, thanks to everyone who's been involved in this, in this process. And just one final thought, because I know we have some late mail that's come in raising some legal questions about how the Zimmer funds might be utilized in this context. That's an issue that we've discussed within the framework of our meetings, and I do think we're, feel pretty comfortable that we're on good footing in order to make the decisions that we're presented with tonight. So just wanted to add that.
No, does Sky want to make a comment, or Dan, would you like to? That was my next.
I'll let Sky speak to the late mail. I did forget to mention the second resolution in the packet, so I just wanted to go on record.
Yeah, we had, yeah, we had.
I apologize. I was focused on the donation question. There's a second resolution in the packet. The purpose of that resolution is to wind the design process back to the master plan, because during some of the previous design activities of the city, you adopted a resolution that constrained some of the design parameters. This resolution, by rescinding that older one, is simply taking us back to the adoption of the master plan for design purposes.
Exactly. And that's also been something that we've discussed a lot in our meetings, and I think we're comfortable that that's a necessary action, and I certainly support us taking it.
Thank you.
And just to echo a little of that, Kevin, this group of the five of us have been together now for several years, and we've had several strategic planning retreats every year. And when the Zimmer Trust was a gift to the city, we discussed in detail at two different city council retreats, the opportunity we had that this could be used in ways that would benefit the advancing of our library and community center process and idea. So this is not something that just came to us yesterday. This has been an ongoing conversation at our strategic planning retreats over the course of the last two years, if I remember, since the Zimmer Trust came to us, as what opportunities we had to use that for the benefit of the community as a whole. So I just want to put that out there.
And Dan, this Larkspur Library Community Center, Dan Hilbert, this has been since 2005 discussed, 2006?
The community facility parcel discussion, yes.
So it's been quite a, quite a discussion for many years. Any other comments from the council members? Okay, I just want to make sure. I see you two. Okay. I'll reach out to the public now. May we have some public comments on the resolutions or just on the whole process?
Just have a question, Madam Mayor. Do you require two separate motions?
Yes.
Yes, each resolution should have a separate motion.
I'm ready to make those motions when you're ready, Madam Mayor.
Well, anyone from the public? I see none. Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. All right, we have resolution to...
Of course. I think Councilwoman Harof brought up some late mail in a, in a question that was brought up about the use of the Zimmer Trust with the term "community center" as opposed in addition to the term "library." And I think it's really important that, to me, that's a little bit of a semantic argument, because modern-day library design are community spaces. They are not simply closed, single-story confined spaces where books sit on shelves and people get shushed by a librarian. They're very engaging, active spaces. So today, I took the opportunity to look at the American Library Association Library Design Winners for last year, and there's 10 of them that are really amazing buildings. But every single one of them had in its description, the term "community" in its description. Everything from indoor/outdoor community gathering spaces, maker spaces, collaboration rooms that were community-based collaboration rooms. They had instrumental, instructional breakout community rooms. They all had gathering spaces that were small and large and had the term "community" in it, because that's where contemporary library design is. And I think it's very important that we recognize that we want to make a cutting-edge library. We don't want to make the old Carnegie-style library of the 1930s. And if you look at the American Library Association's parameters for what really qualifies as quality design, they are all community spaces. So to me, the idea that we are embracing that as the role that this community facility parcel will have, not only just as a library in its traditional source, but a library in its contemporary opportunity to educate and to participate as a community, is very important. And I acknowledge that we really value the library component, but libraries are engaging, interactive, community spaces now. So the term "library" and "community" are intertwined.
I'll say. Thank you. Kathy?
I'd like to second the motion unless Council Number Two wants to say something first.
Actually, you brought it up earlier, but I'd like to get on the record what the city attorney's opinions are on the letter.
Oh, yeah.
I thought you might want me to weigh in.
We jumped over you, Sky.
That's okay.
We're going to come back.
I figured. So just to set the context a little bit more, city council did receive a letter from an attorney representing a Larkspur resident asserting that it would be legally inappropriate to use funds from the Zimmer Estate for the purpose of a use of the community facility parcel that includes both library and community center components. As support for that position, it cites a single case. The case basically says that donations made to a charitable organization can only be used for the purposes of that charitable organization. The Zimmer Estate, as I understand it, was not a charitable trust, and I can state pretty unequivocally that the city... trust, and I can state pretty unequivocally that the city of Larkspur is not a charitable organization. I think I understand generally the assertion that the letter was attempting to make, but I don't find the argument particularly convincing. Mostly what I would say is that I think that the, in these circumstances, the city council has the discretion to make a determination that use of these funds for a use on the community facility parcel to achieve the goal of a library, if the city council believes that pursuing components of both a library and community center is the best way to get the library component built, that it has the discretion to make that determination, and that a court would most likely grant significant deference to the city council's determination about that.
Right. Any questions for Sky? Larry?
Let's say we get the worst-case ruling on that. So, if it's a half-community center, half-library, then the city can always reimburse the trust, say, $75,000 out of our reserves or whatever.
I mean, I think, yes, and additionally, I think that that sort of points to sort of the formal absurd, like, that...
Yeah.
The argument is basically a formal one that collapses as soon as you apply any logic to it. You know, we don't even know what this thing will be yet. We know that the property is supposed to be used for a community facility. Some studies have been done with, that have set the goal of some combination of library and community center. If, how you pull that apart, even if it's in separate buildings, and say, well, the money could only be used for one, even though both components were a goal, and doing both components was the way to achieve the library, I'm not sure how a court's going to untangle that and why it would want to when the city council has made an independent determination that pursuing both is the best path forward for getting the library.
Okay. Well, I kind of backed you in the saying the word that you said rather than me having to say it. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, if I could go back to my seconding the motion?
Do you have a question, though?
I want to know who made the motion.
You do.
You did.
And in fact...
I didn't say the words.
Well, then you go ahead and say the words, and then I will say it. Because I want to say something in connection with my second of the motion. So, go ahead.
Resolution 10/19.
Okay. And then, Kevin, what would you like to say?
I would like to second the motion and express my appreciation for Councilmember Hilmer for having made that motion. Because I think it's, I think it's a good representation of our commitment.
An appreciation and gratitude for all the hard work of the community. Thank you.
That's right. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? I see none. It passes. Now, we need a motion for resolution 1119.
So moved.
I'd second that as well, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to discuss that one, though, or...
That was discussed.
It was.
Oh, we haven't discussed, he hasn't presented or discussed it yet.
You don't have to.
I thought you would. Dan, do you want to discuss?
That's the one I mentioned to wind the design process back to the master plan.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go back to now. May I have a motion?
There is a motion and a second.
And a second.
Did you have a public comment on that?
I asked.
Oh, okay. Maybe I'm just too tired to remember.
That's okay. That's okay. All right. So, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? I see none. It passes. Congratulations. Jeez, thank you. We're excited. Go raise those funds. $50,000. Well, now, absolutely, Joe.
We would like to thank...
It's too late.
We'd like to thank the council for all their help through this process. We'd like to thank the city staff, who's done an excellent job of educating us and helping us. I'd like to specifically call out the thanks of Tina MacArthur from the Lark Theater Board, who's been a deep counsel on this and helped dramatically. I'd like to also thank from the Parks and Rec Commission, Jean Friedel, who runs the wrecking crew, who's been a huge help. I'd like to also thank Kathy Green, who's been a huge help and was on the original planning commission, Steve Stein, all of the people here who've worked on this, particularly Barbara Friday...
Yes.
...who, with the friends of the library, incubated this project, if we'd say in high-tech, and then pushed us out the door before we became dependent. Perfect incubator. And I want to thank everyone in the community, and we hope to do a very good job, and we'll be back, not asking for money, but to update you in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe Jennings. Nice job. Thank you for hanging out with us tonight, everyone. I hope you learned a lot.
And, Joe, I just want to thank you for your leadership, Joe Jennings.
All right. With that, I'd like to adjourn this meeting. Do I need a motion?
So moved.
All in favor, aye.
Joe's already picking up the name tags.